Is everybody ready for, to be reconvened? The board is reconvening after closed session. And the next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 27th, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the October 27th, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have one public comment that was sent in that we are, it's a relatively short one, so we're gonna go ahead and just read that one for tonight.
We have a public comment from Shannon Berkey. He submitted this electronically. "I would like to draw the board's attention to public posts on the Westmont Teachers Association Facebook page that reference remote learning. Several reference remote learning in a way that makes it clear teachers in this district do not see the need to take remote learning seriously. Some go even further and mock parents who have to quote, 'deal with our children on Halloween', stating specifically, 'teachers think about all the parents at home with their kids on Halloween and a full moon on the same day with a laughing meme.' As a parent who made the decision to keep my child home this year for her safety and for the safety of the teachers and other school staff, and also as the daughter of a retired public school teacher, I find this highly offensive. Makes Westmont look bad and shows why so many of my neighbors are paying private school tuition to avoid this district. It also reinforces why I've sensed from the beginning of school year, which is that the teachers and administrators of this district do not have an interest in providing a quality remote learning experience. And I hope the board considers this information when making the determination to approve all remote learning again, and the people who make these posts consider being better role models for our kids."
Are there any other public comments tonight? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations. Jill Jackson, Miller School Instructional Teaching Assistant, .5 FTE. Jean Petzschak, Westmont High School Boys freshman basketball coach. Approval of November 2020 expenditure report. Ratification of October 2020 regular payroll. Approval of AFR Shared Services or Outsourcing Requirement Report. And approval of board travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Ms. Stromeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Foyle?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to our discussion and informational items. The first one is the presentation of the fiscal year 2020 audit. And Susan Jones from Miller Cooper is here to walk us through. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. In your electronically, you should have two deliverables from the audit this year. The CAFR, the annual financial report, as well as our required communications letter. I'm gonna take you through some of the highlights of the annual financial report and then do a high-level overview of the required communications. So if you turn past the table of contents and passed a few pages after where it lists the Board of Education, there's a Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting that the district received from ASBO International for the 2019 CAFR. The district plans to submit the 2020 CAFR to that same certificate program as well. Starting on page one is the financial section. And included on pages one through four is our audit opinion. The district did receive an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance the district can receive. Past the audit opinion, on pages five through 18 is management's discussion and analysis. This is unaudited information, it's prepared by management, but it's really a great overview of what's included in the CAFR. It's kind of like the Cliff Notes of the financial statements. It talks about fluctuations year over year and the challenges that the district faces in the future. But past management's discussion and analysis really begins the heart of the financial statements on page 19. And this is the statement in net position on a government-wide basis. It has all the assets and liabilities of the district included, both current and long-term. And long-term meaning all the capital, the infrastructure, as well as all the long-term debt, the pension liabilities, the general obligation bonds. And you can see that assets and deferred outflows exceeded liabilities and deferred inflows. So the district ended with a net position of about $9.8 million, which is a slight decrease from 2019. Turning to page 20 is the statement of activities. Similar to the statement in net position, this is presented on a full accrual basis. So depreciation expense and all the changes from long-term assets and liabilities are included in this statement. But overall, revenues generated were $41.9 million, offset by expenses of $42.2. So there was a slight decrease in net position of $287,000 to again end the year with a net position of $9.8 million. Turning to page 21 is the balance sheet. And this, page 21 and 22 lists out all the major funds and all the funds of the district. Each of the funds had a positive fund balance at the end of the year for a total combined fund balance of $18.2 million. A couple things I want to point out in the general and the O&amp;M fund is there's certain assigned balances. In the general fund, which is the education account, there's $251,000 of assigned fund balance. That's primarily related to a donation of $250,000 that came in that needs to be spent on the high school, so it needs to be spent on a specific purpose. It's just not money you can spend for any reason. And then in the O&amp;M fund is another $242,000 of assigned fund balance, which was generated from the TIF. And that's for our specific infrastructure spending. Included in the balance sheet, there's no long-term assets or liabilities, so this is all the current assets, as well as the current liabilities of the district. Turning to page 23 is a great reconciliation that takes the full accrual basis of accounting in the statement of net position and kind of reconciles it to the balance sheet. And you can see the significant reconciling items are the long-term assets, the changes in deferred inflows and outflows related to the pension liabilities and the OPEB liabilities. Turning to page 24 and 25, again is each of the major funds of the district, each of the funds of the district. And this shows all the revenues that were received during fiscal year 2020, offset by all the expenditures. You can see in the general fund, there was a decrease in fund balance of $202,000. So really, if that donation of $250,000 wasn't received, you would have had a deficit spending in the fund balance. You can see revenues over expenses were $61,000, so if you took away that donation, there would be deficit spending. Overall, the combined fund balance of the district was about $18.3 million. And that was an increase of revenues over expenditures of $476,000 on a combined fund basis. Turning to page 28 are the fiduciary funds. These have all the student activity funds that the district holds on behalf of student activities, as well as the trust fund. Next year, the district is gonna be, have to be required to adopt GASB 84, where the student activity funds are gonna be combined into the general fund. So currently, this cash is not in the statements that we just reviewed, they're kind of on their own. But next year, there's gonna be a change in financial reporting where those funds will be included in the general fund. Turning to page 30 begins the notes to the financial statements. They go from pages 30 to 80. There were no significant changes in accounting policies this year. All the significant accounting policies are disclosed in these financial statements. But if you wanted to do a deeper dive on each of the financial statement line items, there's more information in the notes, such as all the actuarial estimates related to the pension liabilities, a roll forward of capital assets, as well as long-term debt. Past the footnotes to the financial statements begins the required supplemental information on page 82. Just one thing I want to point out is there's a lot of detail over the next couple pages related to the pension liabilities. And one thing I wanted to point out on page 82 is you can see the IMRF fund. Last year, it was a little bit unusual year for the IMRF fund. They had poor investment returns. You can see there was a loss in the middle of the page of about $1 million in that 2019 column. And this year, their investment return generated $3.1 million. So you can see that, you know, the IMRF fund is about 98% funded, which is obviously a very strong percentage. Past all the pension information, detailed pension information also included in the CAFR on page 92 begins more detailed information of all the revenues and expenditures of each of the major funds of the district compared to budget. So if you wanted a deeper dive on the variances, it's all included in the CAFR. And then the last section is statistical information, which gives a lot of trending information over the last 10 years of fund balance, operations, statistical information on demographics. Does anybody have any questions on the financial statements? Turning to our required communications letter. "We executed our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. And we don't issue a separate opinion on internal controls. We issue an opinion on the financial statements and their fairness in relation to general accepted accounting practices. However, based on our understanding of internal controls, we didn't identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies." Turning to the next page. "Our planning, scope, and timing was consistent with what we set out to do in our engagement letter. Our firm is independent of the district. All significant accounting policies have been disclosed in the CAFR." And on pages three and four, there's a whole slew of new GASB statements that are coming out over the next couple of years. Majority of them will not impact the district significantly. The only one that's gonna have somewhat of an impact is GASB 84, as I mentioned, where the activity funds are now going to be included in the general fund. Turning to page four. "As part of our audit process, we do look at all the significant estimates that impact the financial statements, such as all the actuarial assumptions, fair value estimates, and we find all the methodologies the district uses to be reasonable." On page five, included in the financial statements notes, as well as here, and we're doing this for all our clients, whether it's a government and not-for-profit manufacturer, but just having a disclosure on the risk and uncertainty around the long-term impact of the pandemic and COVID to the district. If, as we were executing our audit, we identified any differences that weren't recorded in the financial statements, we would be required to communicate that to you, and there were none. We had no disagreements with management. We really want to thank Kim and Kevin for all their transparency. They're very ready when we come in to do the audit. This year was a little challenging because we did the audit remotely, so there was a lot of scanning and talking on Zoom meetings and things like that. So appreciate your extra effort. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. I think that the audit is so important, and I think it's important for our taxpayers to know that we're spending our money, that we have good internal controls, as you mentioned, and good accounting practices, that assure that our tax dollars are being spent well. And it's no, and that our administration works so closely with our auditors and are so cooperative. That doesn't happen in every school district, so that's a really wonderful thing for Kim and Kevin, that things are so solid in our district and the way our financial reporting is. Kim wins, like, for 14 years, I think she's won a Certificate of Excellence for her financial reporting. So we appreciate the second set of eyes on our financials.
It's a lot of work preparing for us to come in, so.
Yeah.
She, so thank you very much. And also, you know, if you, any of you have questions throughout the year, you could always reach out to me or a member of my team, be happy to answer them.
I do have a question about, so we've been in a deficit. I know this year was a little different because we had reduced expenditures that we weren't expecting to have. But I know that the audit doesn't really answer those questions about deficit reduction. That's additional consulting and things. So I was just curious of what other districts do in a time where they're running deficits? Like, do most districts handle that on their own? Do most have consulting firms come in and offer guidance?
The majority of districts that we work with, which is a little over 30, they don't have too many outside consultants come in from that perspective.
Sure.
They do maybe hire PMA to do some helping them with projections and things like that. Or they might hire, you know, consultants for specific projects, but I haven't seen where they're, you know, helping with the deficit reduction plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the State of the District presentation.
Usually, the November board meeting, I share with the board the information from the school report cards, and so it's kind of like our State of the District. This year, like, so much is what is happening around us, it's very different because of what happened last spring with COVID-19 and some of the waivers that the state of Illinois provided. There's less information in the school report card than we normally would share. And so it's a much different amount of information that we have, but we do have some of the same information from prior years, but it definitely will look different. So basically, the school report card provides a financial overview, student information. We have information on our class of 2020, most recent graduating class, some student data, and then, of course, we like to talk about our accomplishments, and then the next steps we'll be taking as a district. So first, in terms of our district finances, and this is from the school report card. They take our revenues and they break them out by source, and so, and this is something I know the board is aware of. Most of our funding comes from our local taxpayers. And so 88.6% of our revenue came from local resources. The state was 8.1%, and that's through the evidence-based funding model. And then federal received a little over 3%, and that's primarily through federal grants. But again, we're very appreciative of this, but it's, our district is primarily funded through our local property taxpayers.
Kevin, is this supposed to be on the projector?
Yeah.
Zero.
Uh-oh.
It's supposed to be, but it's not working, so.
All right.
I don't know why. So I've been trying to. Can you take me out of it real quick?
Oh, sure.
You mean minimize it? Yeah, I wanna look at the view real quick, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go into it real quick and let me see. I'm gonna do this. And go into full screen mode.
Okay.
And I'll see if I can get it. It was working earlier, and then when you went to the presentation, something happened in the view. Galaxy is wonderful, it works.
I could do my quick board report if you wanted me to, Jill.
Well, yeah, I guess just, it is on board docs.
Okay. Right, it is available on board docs.
For people at home that want to.
Because she didn't, I don't think you used Google, did you, for yours?
I did not use Google.
Yeah, so yours might be okay. So in terms of our expenditures, now this is, again, how the state breaks it down. What percent of your expenditures go to various areas? And it'll indicate it's 51.5% in instruction. I always make the argument that you could say that 100% of our expenditures go to instruction because, you know, just heating the buildings, cooling the buildings, you have to have the proper environment, the custodial, food service, all those different elements, that all goes into educating our students. And then we have general administration is a little over 3%, support services 34%, and other expenditures 10.8%. One addition, this was new last year, is the per-people expenditure. So we now have a cost per student for each of our schools. South School at $31,000, that obviously is a high cost, but you have a relatively small population of students, but many of the students are at risk, you know, or have IEPs, and so because of the population, it does take additional support to educate those students. Miller Elementary is at $16,000. Manning is at $17,000. The discrepancy can be, sometimes it's as simple as one building has more veteran teaching staff than another building. And so the more veteran the teacher, the higher the salaries, and so then you wind up, the overall cost ends up being higher. Westmont Junior High is $21,768, and the high school is $23,462. If you look at school districts, typically it's more expensive to run a junior high, and then it's more expensive to run a high school. And so those, the fact that those two cost elements are higher than the elementary are not out of line. And then the other thing, and I'll talk about this a little bit more, the summative designation. The one thing that the state did, again, because we don't have all the information in the report card, whatever the designation the schools had in the prior year, they, again, use the same designation. So the prior year, Miller, Manning, and Junior High were commendable, and then the high school was exemplary.
Kevin, I'm sorry to interrupt your flow here, but just to make sure, are all of these statistics based on the prior year? So the per-people expenditures, enrollment, all of that is for, you may have said it already, so.
Right. This is for the 1920 school year.
Okay.
So the school report card.
For everybody who's reading this the same way.
Right. So the school report card comes out in October for the prior year.
Just keep going. Ignore the man behind the curtain.
All right. Well, I have another presentation after this, though. And then in terms of our student demographics, you can take a look at our ethnic diversity. This is pretty much the same as the 18, 19 school years, so about 64% white, 7.9% black, 22.6% Hispanic, specifically Iner, less than 1%, and then two or more races is 4.7%. And then a little bit more information in terms of our demographics, this is district-wide. We have about 17% of our students with an IEP. 8.2% are English language learners, so English is not their first language spoken in the home. Low income, about 33%. Homeless, 2.5%. Our attendance is 96.5%. Mobility rate, 4.4%. Our chronic absences, our 5%, our dropout, 2%, and truance, 2.6%. Then in terms of the Class of 2020, 83% of our graduates went on to college, 52% to a four-year, and 31% to a two-year. Our graduation rate is 97%, which is one of the highest in the state. And then in terms of the Five Essentials survey, now you won't find the information on the school report card. It'll say that it's not available due to COVID-19. The students did administer the Five Essentials, and if you go to the University of Chicago website, Five Essentials, you can view schools' Five Essential data. And so it is possible to view it. And so the Five Essentials, they take a look at schools in terms of five categories, effective leaders, collaborative teachers, involved. effective leaders, collaborative teachers, involved families, ambitious instruction, supportive environment and then, based upon the results from the survey staff, they survey parents and students, grades four through 12 now, it used to just be junior high and high school, but does go into the upper elementary. And then based upon the survey responses to those questions, the state board then looks at that data and determines if schools are well-positioned for school improvement and growth. And then they use six ratings, most, more, average, less, least or low. And when you look at the high school, the high school is well-organized for school improvement and then in terms of the four, five subcategories, effective leaders more, collaborative teachers most, involved families most, ambitious instruction more and supportive environment more. The junior high also is designated as well-organized, effective leaders average, collaborative teachers average, involved families more, ambitious instruction more and supportive environment more. Miller also received the well-organized for school improvement with effective leaders, collaborative teachers average, involved families more, ambitious instruction more, supportive environment more. And then Manning is organized for school improvement, effective leaders average, collaborative teachers average, involved families more, ambitious instruction average and supportive environment average. And then what happens with the, that data then, the building principals, they take a look at the surveys, the survey responses and then that helps them develop school improvement plans based upon that to improve in those categories. In terms of our accomplishments, again, the high school had a 97% graduation rate, which is one of the highest in the state. Our junior high is one of the few junior highs that has a student service learning requirement and 100% of the students in eighth grade met their hours that they needed in order to graduate. South Early Childhood Center received the gold circle of quality, which is a designation given to early childhood programs and it's based upon their curriculum, the quality of teaching and then also the quality of the learning environments. We had six to seven AP scholars, 304 AP tests passed and 470 tests taken and that's based upon a school enrollment, high school enrollment of a little less than 400 students. So, again, our AP program is designed to, for all of our students, we don't limit participation and then one of the numbers that we're most proud of is their underrepresented students. We had 79 tests passed by our underrepresented students. The high school for the third time was recognized and ranked in the Washington Post and is considered one of the top 2% of all high schools in the US. Last year, the high school was also named a model PLC school, we have PLCs in all of our schools. They won the Before Award, which goes to a school in the country that is designated as having, again, that, a strong PLC environment, is considered the best for that year and that's based upon student growth and then also the PLC plan that the school has in place. The junior high has been designated an Illinois Horizon School to Watch for junior highs and again, our South Early Childhood Center, the gold circle of quality. Some of the best practices and this is, goes into the evidence-based funding model, certain elements that are considered best practices that we have in place, we have a full-day kindergarten program, we have instructional coaches in the district, we have a summer school, embedded technology, dual-language program and professional learning communities. In terms of our next steps, and normally we'd have other student data available, but again, we didn't give the IER, which is state assessment, at the elementary and junior high. SAT was given in the fall, but we haven't gotten the results yet at this point. Even out of our own local assessments, we weren't giving in the spring as well, so some of this that we're doing now is, we still though have the IER from prior years and the SAT from prior years and so, the staff is looking at questions that students have answered incorrectly most frequently, then they identify what standard the questions measure, identifies the gaps in the curriculum and then create formative assessments aligned to the standards so that we can measure our students' progress. Our professional learning communities are meeting as grade-level teams. We've had increased articulation between the grade levels and increased alignment in our curriculum and again, we're in the process of creating those formative and summative assessments aligned to the common core and we're utilizing iReady and local data to drive instruction. So, we're using iReady for progress monitoring and that helps our teachers then to see what standards our students are not meeting. We're focusing on critical thinking, problem-solving, problem-based learning and communication skills. The junior high has added a win period. Manning and Miller are using Otis to track student performance on the Illinois standards. We also have a win period at both Manning and Miller and then the high school has their version of it that they call ASAP intervention. So it's a little bit less information than prior years, but that kind of gives you an idea of what information we have from this school report card. So there, any questions?
Kevin, I have a couple of questions slash comments. So, my first comment is, thank you for doing this, I think it's always nice to see the state of the district. I want to comment, some of this information I think would be helpful if we knew some benchmarks and I don't know how you access those, so I might be giving you an impossible task, but like for example, when we look at our revenue and expenditures, I'm wondering if there are benchmarks of other districts like us, that we would have data that's accessible to us that we could benchmark, especially on the expenditure side. When I looked at that, it made me wonder what other districts pie charts look like and if there is a sort of universally accepted benchmark for things like what percent is being spent on general admin, what percent is being spent on supportive services. I mean, that doesn't mean it has to necessarily lead us in a certain direction, but I think it would be helpful for me at least as I evaluate, you know, our district to know how is what we're doing compared to, you know, sort of an average district. Does that make sense?
Sure, sure it does and that's something that yes, we can, you know, pull together. If that's something that the board has an interest in seeing, we can pull that together and take a look at, you know, similar-sized districts as ours and then possibly also look in different regions and pull together that information.
Okay, and the next thing I wanted to just say is, this is more of a comment than a question. You know, you've, I've been involved in a couple of state of the district presentations and I understand the explanation for the per pupil expenditure and why, you know, sometimes teacher salaries tend to skew that in one direction or another. It's really concerning to me and it remains really concerning to me that our elementary school that has the highest percentage of low-income students, the highest percentage of English language learners and the elementary school with the highest percentage of students with IEPs has a significantly less per pupil expenditure. That's very concerning to me, it has been from the beginning and I know you're looking at, what's the best way to utilize our resources, especially at the elementary level, I think that's really important and I just want to point to this line in your per pupil expenditure chart and just say that that emphasizes to me how important that is. I, it's very, I just have a hard time looking at these numbers year after year and I really hope that when we have a chance to look at the elementary schools a little more closely, we can come up with a way to make sure that our investment in our students is reflective of the needs of the population in those schools. And I, I understand your explanation, I know there's a lot of reasons, but I think it's something we need to focus on in the future.
I'm making sure everyone got a chance to speak. So I, thank you again and I'm always proud to hear the accomplishments that our district did and I understand we, the year ended very abruptly, or the year as it normally would occur, ended abruptly in March. So, hearing all those wonderful steps and all that we've accomplished, it just makes me think of like how we can keep the momentum going this year in a really difficult year. So, how can we support the foundation that we have? How can we make sure our staff are feeling appreciated and that they have the tools that they need, that parents have the tools and students have the tools that they need? So, you know, how can we continue our success? I know we're going to be remote learning until January 19th, so thinking of how we can support our staff through professional development, through our PLCs and collaboration, through that remote learning time and I did notice, one thing that jumped out at me that was kind of surprising and maybe it's always been this way, but at three of our schools for the collaboration, for the five essential survey, the collaborative teachers' score was average, which isn't bad, it's just, and given our PLCs, maybe I'm misreading that definition of what collaborative teacher is, what it's really measuring, I was curious if you could speak to that, because you'd think with that PLC time, there would be a lot of collaboration.
Right, and you know, and right now, we're kind of doing the item analysis of the survey, but some of it is the collaboration at grade level versus between grade levels and so, there might be a high level of collaboration within a grade level, but not that vertical articulation and so that's some of the areas that we can improve upon.
And then I did, one last question is, what is South's capacity, South School's capacity? So they had 31 students last year, I was just kind of curious because I just don't know.
It's, that's a little bit less than what its maximum capacity is.
Okay, but pretty close to its maximum?
But it's pretty close.
And that depends on what time, what time of year that measurement was, because it's taken on a specific day, so enrollments can fluctuate. So, our enrollments typically in those programs might be a little bit lower at the beginning of school than they are after we've had preschool screenings and things like that.
Gotcha.
They have to leave X number of space for kids that are in early intervention to have a spot in the preschool at the beginning of the year.
So those, as we do preschool screenings, those programs reach capacity.
Okay.
Yeah, so enrollment at the end of the year is higher than at the beginning of the year, so it depends on...
What does enrollment look like this year?
Um...
Because I'm assuming we're not doing the same preschool screenings?
We're doing them differently, but we do have screenings, I'll, I can check and see what the enrollment is.
So, I think, this is my first state of the, state of the district. I, I just kind of would love to know how we can get Miller and Manning to be a little bit more represented in the exceptional pieces. Having, I've had a kid at South and I, and I know that they are amazing and the junior high and the high school is doing some wonderful things, but I just don't, I don't see a lot of Miller and Manning represented here and I don't know that that's correct, because I think they're both amazing and have some wonderful educators, so what do we do to, and maybe it's tied to the, to the percentage per pupil, maybe it's tied to the communication from grade levels, thinking of a second grader going into third grade, but, but what do we do to get them the recognition that I know they're, they're putting out for, because they're amazing schools? And without them being amazing schools, then our junior high and our high school would not be, because it's got to start at that elementary level. So, so what do we do to, to get them more represented here?
Well, I think, well, first echo what you just said, you know, when you, I've always have said this, when you take a look, for instance, at what we're doing at the high school, you know, that's a credit to what we're doing at the lower grades, because obviously, most of our students are moving through our entire system and then arrive at our high school and so it's, a lot of that effort is being put in at the lower grades. One of the conversations we've had at the elementary level is possibly looking at different types of recognition, like blue ribbon, for instance, and pursuing that and, you know, looking at that criteria and so that's one of the things we're doing. The, there's, there's different, obviously, different recognition out there for different types of schools and so, it just seems like there's more things at the high school level that recognize high schools than you find at the elementary level and so some of it is just us doing our homework and finding those things that we can, you know, apply to and, you know, get that recognition that they so originally deserve, you know, and so that's probably what we're doing, but the blue ribbon is one of the things we're looking at.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Sure.
Next up on the agenda for discussion is the update on the 2020, 2021 school year.
Alright, this probably won't show up on the screens as well, but it's in board docs and so, what I've been trying to do every board meeting is just kind of bring the board and our community up to speed on where we're at with our current school year under the pandemic and again, I always like to start at the very beginning in terms of where we're at in Red Store, Illinois and I'm seeing something I left out of that first bullet point. Phase four, currently today, we're phase four tier two mitigation. On Friday, what's missing is the three, on Friday, our region will move to tier three mitigation. So the governor at his press conference today made the announcement that several regions of Illinois and our region is included in that, will be designated tier three. We're still not at phase three, last spring we're at phase three, so what has happened is within each of the phases now, there's multiple tiers of mitigation. Tier three mitigation becomes a little bit more restrictive in terms of, again, it calls for small groups indoors, it affects more the business community than it does the education community, but certain businesses will not be able to operate, like movie theaters, for instance, other businesses like hair salons, barber shops will still be able to provide services, so it just depends on, but then there's restrictions on how many people and so forth. If the state doesn't bend the curve when we're in tier three, then what happens next is we revert back to phase three, so we become more restrictive and so, unfortunately, all indications are, we're not really, the increase is now exponential instead of linear and so that doesn't bode well for bending the curve in the short, short term. Again, phase five is when there's vaccine available, there's been some good news on that front, two different companies have vaccines that are proving to be effective or if we have no new cases over sustained periods of time. Again, always our guiding principles is the health, safety of our students and staff, providing meaningful academic experiences, working on the social, emotional needs of all of our students, consistent stability for all of our students and staff and provide continuous... and provide continuous professional learning opportunities for all of our staff. And again, our decision making, we have our hybrid learning plan that is still available. We've been using the DePage County Health Department transition levels. And we're solidly in red right now, substantial. And we have been that way for a couple of weeks now. And the recommendation is that we're encouraged to be in remote learning. Again, it's a local decision. And so that's where we're at right now. This is, this is kind of interesting, and I'm not sure exactly what's happening. But normally on Monday, the DePage Health Department has a Zoom meeting with the superintendents and reviews the updated metrics, and then will post an updated school metric. Monday, they did not post a new updated school metric. And there's something going on between the IDPH and county health departments. Not sure exactly, but right now, the IDPH isn't sharing information. It doesn't sound like with the county health departments. And so DePage County doesn't want to post new metrics until they can confirm that their numbers matches the IDPH. And so that's what they're working on. But soon as it's available, we can share it. But it's really not going to change much from what we're seeing here. As a matter of fact, the new cases for 100,000, DePage has been averaging between 600 and 300 new cases per 100,000 each day now. The weekly count, case count trend is up. The weekly youth is up as well. The positivity rate is up. So all those things are continuing to, to be in an increasing mode. Local positivity, now this is a little bit different from what you have in the board book, because I updated it today. I'm looking at seven day rolling positivity. And so I've been checking it on a regular basis. And so as of today, the seven day positivity for Westmont is 11.49%. Downers grave is 10.5%. Clearing hills is 12.6% and Hinsdale is 9.8%. So in DePage County, the positivity rate continues to increase. Cases for persons under 20 years of age continues to increase. Our new cases are well above 100 and our weekly case counts are increasing. Our staff data, again, in terms of certified, non-certified, who's tested positive, who's quarantining. Honestly, I didn't check the list today, so this may, there may be one or two additional now. But it kind of gives you an idea of, of where we're at. And then what I sent out Friday is that rather than trying to do this week to week and seeing if we can resume hybrid, you know, the trend right now doesn't indicate that that's what would happen. So we'll be in remote learning until January 19th. There'll be several other districts doing the same. That automatically builds in a two week quarantine period after the holidays. Because as much as everybody's encouraged to kind of change their plans for the holidays, I know, you know, the fatigue's setting in and those traditions are difficult to give up. And so people are probably still going to take some chances. And so this way, we build in an opportunity that people are going to be positive. They'll be positive during those two weeks. And then we're going to still try to maintain the small groups two days a week. Although the, again, those two weeks after Thanksgiving, we'll do another break because building in a quarantine time during that period as well. But the goal is that we'll, hopefully, we start to see that curve bend and the numbers start to improve. In conversations I've had with our WTA, we don't necessarily have to be all the way out of substantial for us to get back to hybrid, but definitely we need to see better trends than what we're, we're currently seeing. And I think that's, that's where we're at.
Kevin, I have a quick question. I'm wondering if at the, maybe the next board meeting or sometime before the start of the second semester, we could just get another update on engagement data as far as the remote learning? And also a little bit more information about what the district is doing to provide support for families, single parent households, households with two working parents, essential workers. I remember in the spring, we talked a lot about the Park District programming. So just a little bit more about what is available to help out in those situations.
Sure, we can. And I can talk to the Park District. Thanks for bringing that up to us. We did offer that. And, and originally, we're providing the, we're going to provide the space for the Park District at Manning. And the parent response was so low that they just kept it at the Park District. But it might be worthwhile to offer that service again and see where parents are at. But yeah, we can provide that at the next board meeting.
Great, thank you.
So Kevin, in terms of small groups being brought in, is it, is that decision being made on an individual school basis or classroom basis? And then if parents or community members have questions about who's being brought in for small groups, should they contact the principal of the school, their teacher? How should they go about clarifying those things?
They should contact the building principal. Each building, right, each building is determining which students. And it's basically two ways, students with IEPs. But then also, every building has a data team. And so the data team looks at the students and how they're performing academically, and then also any concerns about social emotional. And then as the data team also identifies students who would be, who would benefit from small groups.
Right. Thank you. Can you help me understand how the days of the small groups are tied to? Like, how do we make that decision? Like, I kind of understand it to be transportation, but just help me understand like how it's, how those groups are, are limited, I should say, or how we decide on that?
Well, the, the, the small groups are, again, those students who need the additional support. You know, so if students are, you know, doing fine remote, then there's no need to bring them in. So the focus really is on students who are struggling, who need additional support. So there isn't necessarily a golden number or a max. It's more driven on the needs of students for that particular school.
Okay. So then are we prepared for those numbers to increase as we continue in remote and the weather continues to get colder and we, the students start to lose those, those outlets and comes out in different places? Starts coming, it starts coming out in their school work or their social emotional? Are, are we prepared for those numbers to, to increase or how do we prepare for that?
No, well, part of it, like, you know, the, the, the only thing that I guess would limit us is the transportation piece, you know? If, if we need to add additional riders and obviously, we need to social distance on the bus and those types of things. So it's just a matter of, of working through that piece. And so there may be a slight delay till we get up to speed. But there really isn't anything that limits us in terms of facilities or anything. It's more, right now, the, the schools are meeting on a regular basis, identifying students, adding students they need to. Right now, that's kind of where we're at. But obviously, the longer that we're in remote, there is the possibility that there will be additional students.
Is there anything that, that we as a board can help with on that transportation side of like, can we, can we help with, I don't know, more transportation vendors or whatever to, to just kind of? Because I know, and this is from my experience, but also the experience of, of other special needs parents, that, that kind of delay in like getting the stuff going, especially for the kids that are special needs, is really challenging. So like, how can we, how can we get it going a little faster for those kids or?
I, I think part of it, anytime there's a transition, there's, you know, it takes a little bit. So we, we had small groups and we transitioned to hybrid and then we transitioned back to small groups. And the other thing that, you know, we contract with a vendor. And we're not the only district that uses that vendor. And, and everybody, I shouldn't say everybody, but most of the school districts are operating on a different schedule than what they have done traditionally. And so, you know, our vendor is, is trying to accommodate all these needs. And so most of those things have been worked out. You know, we've been in small groups for a couple of weeks now. We know we're going to be in small groups. So it's easier to make those, those adjustments. We're already planning for, you know, we're being optimistic. We're already planning for January 19th, transitioning back to hybrid. We're going to be doing a, a survey of families to see where families are at in terms of hybrid versus remote for that second semester, so that we can have all those pieces in place. So, so part of it was just that learning curve moving through those different transitions. And so I, I think going forward, there, there won't be the long delays.
Okay. And I literally just thought of it this second because I stare out my window at them. And we just brought up partnering with the Park District. Is there any potential for, for partnering with the Park District for any additional transportation? As they've got a couple of buses that they kind of already shuttle kids back and forth with or maybe a one-off? I don't know if you, I literally just bring it up as, because I don't know if you've talked to them about it.
Sure. We've never talked to them about transportation. Obviously, during the school year, there are, they provide transportation for some of their students that go to their after school program. And so that's a conversation we can have with them. See where they're at.
And then my last piece on the small groups, the last question. So they've got the two week quarantine built in post Thanksgiving, two week quarantine built in post Christmas. But those groups are not stopping. If possible, they're just transitioning over to, over to a Zoom situation or are they stopping?
Correct, no, no.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll still receive additional support.
Thank you.
And that was my question about the small groups and the two weeks. So that's essentially remote.
Right, right.
So for those, do all schools have small groups? So the junior high, high school and South? Do they all have some sort of? And I really appreciate all those, those frequent updates that you give to the parents and the community every Friday. And then as a board, hearing an update every meeting, because it changes so much what's happening. So I guess the question I had was what do we need? Like, what does the district need through this time? How can we, I alluded to it when we were talking about the state of our district. But is there any professional development? I don't know if we have any more days, like if we need a teacher institute day or we need to bring in consultants to help with remote learning, to help give teachers the tools that they need. We talked, we've talked a little bit about tightening our policies related to COVID and making sure we can be flexible and keep adjusting. If we walk into hybrid, how can we tighten our policies so that we continue to remain safe for all of our staff and students? Just trying to think of the goals we could be making during this time to keep moving forward.
Sure. And we, we have brought in some consultants for our remote learning, that we've done that. We still have a couple of remote learning days that we could utilize. We have a SIP day December 2nd. And so we're planning on, for that SIP day, providing additional staff development for the remote learning. We're also providing, you know, we, we talk about the social emotional health of our students that we're very aware of and we're, we're cognizant of. Well, there's also the social emotional of our staff as well. So we're also taking a look at that need as well on December 2nd. And then based upon feedback we get from that determines if we think during the stretch, we need to do a remote learning day or, you know, another day for, for that. But ongoing, we've been providing that staff development.
And for the, now that we have an extended remote learning period, I know what the high school Wednesdays have been like a planning day and an independent working or asynchronous learning day. Is there any thought to revisiting those days now that we're in a longer stretch of, of remote learning?
Part of that is, again, for that staff development opportunity and to, you know, so that's something that we can revisit and see, you know, if we can, can modify that remote learning plan. That's a conversation I can have with the admin team. But I'd want their feedback before making a commitment.
And maybe that's working really well and we don't want to make a change there.
Right.
Sorry, just to clarify, so the all remote for high school, the Wednesdays are still kind of like a PLC and students working independently?
Right, right.
Have you guys talked about doing a rotating block just to get more instructional time with students and more teacher-student?
They have not looked at that, no.
But just to echo Dana's point, though, I think as far as, you know, I, I would love to remain ever so optimistic that we'll be back in a hybrid on January 19th. But there's reality also. And so I just think that's where, again, that engagement data and like, how many of our students are in danger of failing out at the high school level? Like, let's gather, gather all of that as much as we can before the start of the second semester to figure out what we need to do in the event that we need to stay in remote learning for a longer time. And then just to pivot back to something we talked about at an earlier meeting, you know, just keeping that ongoing conversation that I know is not a popular one about if, if there's any possibility of getting the, the primary grades into hybrid and keeping the other grades remote. So I think, you know, we, we're lucky to have this time right now where we can kind of pause and shift a little bit more in the second semester if we need to.
And, and as I said, I'll bring that information at the next meeting. I know the schools are very on top of those students, you know, those high school students who are not passing their classes, the junior high and the elementary. So they're very on top of that. So I'll be able to bring that information for you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the high school program. You said that they have something called ASAP. So I'm familiar with the junior high, just because I have a junior high student. Is that, is that used in the same way that they're pinpointing students that need help on that Wednesday? Or is it, are they using different days?
Right. Right now, some of those students are, they're small groups, so they're bringing in for the small groups. In a normal school year, right, Wednesday afternoon is, you know, we have PLCs. And so there's a, the student day ends a little earlier. Well, on that Wednesday, the high school students who are in the ASAP program, they're actually staying in school for the remainder of that time, getting additional support. And sometimes, in some cases, it's just homework completion that they're, they're lacking, you know? So, or they might need to retest on something. And so that's what they're doing. It's working the same way in remote, you know? Those students are receiving additional support on Wednesdays. So it works similar to the other schools.
Any other questions or comments on the topic?
I have a question. So on the staff COVID data, are we not pulling student data when we're in remote?
Correct.
Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, we're, we're very remote. We're, like, the, the data we're getting were, you know, because parents were calling a student in sick and that type of thing. I'll check and see if parents are still reporting.
Because like, I know, I'm certifying for, for Max when he comes in.
Right, right.
But like, so, and, and maybe this ties to like, just kind of seeing on here like a as of date, right? Like, I kind of read this as the staff COVID data, and this is when we were fully remote and we didn't have any small groups coming in. That's how I kind of read it. But then I had somebody ask me a question about it. I was like, oh, yeah. So like, to, just to see, and I understand, we can't ask people to report if they're not physically coming in the building. Is that correct? We can't like, we can't like, put it out there. Like, could we, could we, is it possible for us to have our families report if they have COVID when they're not in the, when they're not in the building? Or is it tied to being in the building?
Well, it's been tied to being in the building because they report absences. Their child is in school and says, I'm not feeling well. And so they go down to the nurse's office. And so that's how we generate that data. With remote learning, if a child isn't going to be able to participate, the parent will still contact the school and let them know. But, you know, I, I, we couldn't, we can ask families to share with us. I do know that I do know that even under the best of circumstances, families are hesitant to share that information.
Yeah. And, and I'm thinking forward to, you know, January.
Right, right.
And, and getting to see the trends of like how our school, and, and our school community, getting to see the trends of how our school community is because we can take a look at Westmont as a whole, but we all know that.
Right.
The Westmont numbers can be skewed by our high number of elder care facilities, but also by the fact that we don't, we don't, we don't cover all of Westmont. You know, 201 does not service all of Westmont. So, you know, to, to see that school data. And then we were talking about January also, has there been any conversation around deciding for a quarter at a time? Not if the parents are choosing, but for us deciding remote or hybrid for a quarter. I mean, it kind of seems like we've done that, right? We have said, or you've said, January 19th, that's end of quarter two, I want to say, or beginning of quarter three, right? We're just, we're just calling it. But does it make more sense as, as we've already kind of done the windsock back and forth into hybrid and out of hybrid to, to decide a couple of weeks before that if third quarter will be, we're just going to stay, stay remote third quarter and shoot for our fourth quarter, which I think probably I would love to, I would love to be optimistic, but it is very scary out there right now. But thinking through to like fourth quarter, fourth quarter is probably our best opportunity to have our kids be hybrid for the entirety of the quarter and really get the best out of kind of the end of their, of their school year this year. So has, has there been conversation around that? And then the other piece that, that kind of came up was, has there been conversation around extending Christmas break and tagging that time onto the end of the year? Again, when we have the best opportunity of our kids actually being in the building with their teachers. And I don't even know if that's possible.
Right.
Because of, because of contracts. But I, if I didn't bring it up, I'd be, I'd be remiss because we're, we're coming up on it.
Right. And well, for your first question, yes, there's conversations about, you know, when we're starting to approach that January and what the numbers look like, you know, it's interesting. And even having conversations is always super intense. There's that whole, well, do you keep giving people hope or do you, are you just giving people false hope, you know? So, so definitely yes, if the, the trend is, hey, you know, January 19th isn't feasible. Based upon what we're hearing from, you know, Page County Public Health, yeah, this is going to be a few more weeks. We, we would be able to make that a longer-term decision at that point and we would do that. The second part in terms of extending the Christmas break and, and the two things, one is you're right, we would have to, we have bargaining groups, we'd have to talk to them and.
Okay.
And see if they would be open to that. The other thing, I was originally thinking about doing something like that and the only hesitation is I know remote isn't perfect and it's not the best thing, but if we went to a four-week winter break, that's two more weeks that students would not have any contact with teachers, remote or in person. And that's why I would be hesitant to do that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So I, I hear Leah, I hear your thought about, kind of going back a couple thoughts about tracking data. And I know that we, it's really hard for a school district to make information about the positivity rate in a town or in a county.
Right.
But I do want to just throw out there that we are not a public health agency, the district isn't. And to track numbers like that is really hard. And I think the best we can do is look at flawed data that we can't say, okay, well, there's this many families in the community in our school district that have it. I just think we would be stretched way too thin. I appreciate that thought because I think a lot, it would make it a lot easier to make decisions, but I just want to take a step back and make sure that we're not crossing boundaries that are our role in the, in this crisis.
Right. And even the, the Page County Health, at first they weren't drilling down to ZIP codes, but there was consistent questions, hey, can we find out? And, and the reason why is because there, you know, it's same thing as you're saying. You're absolutely right. We only go as far south as 55th Street.
Yeah.
That's who we service. We pick up a little bit of Clarendon Hills, we pick up a little bit of Downers. But what the Page County Public Health is, I think I mentioned this, you know, it's not like our families live in a bubble, you know? And because they live north of 55th Street, they never go south of 55th Street. And so that's why they would be cautious about it to, if we could ever drill down to blocks within Westmont, you know? You know, even that you'd have to be careful of, you know, you'd have to be cautious because of the fact that, you know, your, your families are not restricted just to their, their block, at least not right now. We'll see what the governor does.
When does the, when does the third quarter end? Is it in March, middle of March?
It's in, it's towards the end of March.
So.
Right, right before, usually right before the spring break.
Okay. Cause I just, based on Leah's question and, and your response that we, if we get to the January 19th date and we can't go back in person, that we might just call the whole third quarter? And I just am not comfortable with that. I think we should try every single week to get them back into the hybrid.
Sure. And, and again, you know, we're, like we were doing it kind of week to week and then, you know, I was looking at the data and had conversations with other districts and, and some districts have also announced their, their plans, others are, will be. But right, I mean, if, if, it all depends on, right, what we're looking at. And if it looks like, you know, things are high, but it's trending in the right direction, then yeah, we may not call it to, yet tomorrow, we may say February 1st, you know, to, to, you know, because I, the other thing that we're, that we want to avoid is, you know, the flipping back and forth.
I totally get that. It just made me nervous to hear that, like on the January 19th, we would just call it for a couple of months when if it is trending in the right direction, maybe we just need like two more weeks remote and then we could go into hybrid. And so I just want to be a little cautious of that. And then just the other piece about the longer Christmas break that makes me nervous is then, you know, many families will just see that as an opportunity to continue to travel and continue to gather. And I'm not sure that that helps anybody either, so.
We probably need another two-week buffer then.
Yeah.
Can we move on to the tentative tax levy, please?
Pull Kim back over here. All right. You're back up on the, so it's working for you.
Good evening. I have the 2020 levy recommendation for you. So first of all, we'll start and review the school district levy process. The first thing that we do is project revenue and expenditures for the following school year. And then I was able to obtain estimates of EAV and new value from both York and Downers Grove Township this year. So this is the first year I've had information from York Township in a long time. And that's really helpful in trying to get a, a good estimate of where we're going to be. Then we review budget implications by fund. We just got our audit and I'll be working on, I need this year's budget projection plus the audit in order to do projections for next year. So I'll be continuing to work on that now that I have all those pieces of data. And then tonight presenting the preliminary levy to the board. And then we publish a truth and taxation notice if necessary. It's been the practice of the district to do this and it protects us from any unforeseen changes in EAV in case the estimates are off a little bit, in case we get more new value, new property than we thought. This gives us a, a buffer. And so you'll see later in my presentation, we ask for a large amount and I show you what I think we're, what we should realistically achieve and they're, they're quite divergent. But again, that protects us and it gives us that leeway to capture all the tax revenue that we're entitled to. And then in December, we'll have the public levy hearing at that board meeting. And then I have to file the certificate of levy by the last Tuesday in December. So we are recommend, I'm recommending levy in the capped funds of $26,795,000. Our debt service of $1,342.56, that's set by our debt service payments. So the total levy of $28.1 million. And again, this is more than we anticipate that we're going to receive. And so in other documents in the, in board docs, you can see what we think we're going to receive. In the capped funds, I'm estimating that we're going to receive $24 million and then overall $25.3 million. So the tax levy is based on the property tax extension limitation law, which is also known as PTEL. And so the district is entitled to 105% of the previous year's levy or the preceding year's CPI, which is 2.3% for the 2020 levy. Last year it was 1.9%. So that's why we will receive a little bit more money because the CPI is greater than it was last year. The 2020 levy represents a 13.85% increase overall and 14.65% in the capped funds. That's what we're asking for. That is not what we're going to receive. And again, this is the piece that protects us. And again, protects us from any of those changes because potentially, you know, there's still, you know, property tax objections, appeals out there. All the numbers from the counties are not final yet and a new construction does vary. So I used about 90% of what they given me as the estimate for our new value, which is a little over $3 million this year. And then our anticipated actual increase again is 2.7%. You can see asking for 13.85, expecting 2.7 overall and 2.86% in the capped funds. And so you can see this pictorially, I think, which is really helpful. We have asked for, and it's, you know, in the earlier years at rate, we didn't ask for quite as much. This allows us to do a little bit of movement among funds based on our, where we see our budgets coming in and things like that, our projections. But you can see that we ask, the blue bar is what we're asking for, the red is what we anticipate. So 2.7% for 2020. And then I think this is really important as well for you to see our tax rate history. So prior to 2009, our EAV was, our, I'm sorry, our tax rate was going down because EAV was increasing each year. Starting in 2009, the recession, our, our tax rate started to increase because EAV was declining. Property values were declining. There's an inverse relationship between tax rate and EAV. So you can see in 2014, at, we're at our lowest point in EAV, highest tax rate. And you can see on the upside, the tax rate has a steeper decline, it's a steeper increase than the, than the decline right now. But we've started to see since 2014, EAV has started to increase, you know, our CPIs. At some times in here, we had low CPI as well. So that is causing our tax rate to decrease as anticipated. So the red bar shows again, the capped funds, so anticipating a tax rate around 4.2089. Our debt service, .2347, so a total over, overall tax rate of 4.4436 is what I'm anticipating. And we usually come in pretty close to that. I'm sorry. And then one of the other things the board has asked for in the past is the, how, what our tax rate looks like compared to other districts. So we do both a comparison of unit districts that are, you know, pre-K or K through grade 12. And then we also take the combination of high school and elementary districts to give you an idea as well. And typically high school, elementary combos are, do have lower tax rates than units. And you can see in the unit districts that Elmhurst has a slightly lower tax rate than we do, but out of those units where, you know, have the second lowest tax rate overall. And you can also see where we compare to other districts in both operating and the debt service piece. And so we will do our truth and taxation notice in the newspaper. So it'll be in the Liberty Suburban Newspaper and that will appear on Thursday, December 3rd. And then we'll have the public hearing on December 15th. And we have yet to decide whether it's going to be at the Village Hall or South School. So we will be asking for the board to make a decision so that I know the location before we post that legal notice on December 3rd. Does anybody have questions?
I really liked your comparison.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next discussion item was a board member request. And so did you want to say anything about?
I'll table this request at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we will come back to this topic at a later meeting. And that was board request for a deficit reduction plan. So that will be future discussions. The next discussion item was public relations committee.
So I think there was a couple of us who requested some items under public relations. So Dana and I were looking at each other.
Looking at each other.
I can start. I, I just wanted to bring up a couple of items relative to public relations that I think have, they've just been weighing on my mind as a board member lately. And specifically because I think it's really important for us to discuss at the board table, how we're communicating with each other, how we're communicating at the board table and how we're communicating with the public. And so I specifically wanted to bring up social media as one item for us to just discuss here for a brief second and then really ultimately likely table that to be discussed by the public relations committee at some point in the future. But really this is mostly for the, for the community's benefit. I think it's really important that we as board members recognize that social media is inevitably a part of our world communications, our community communications. There's no really avoiding it. And we have done our best, I think, as a board to inform the public through social media. And inevitably that kind of leads to comments and comments back from board members to community members and, and the, unfortunately, discussion tends to happen or take place within social media. And I just want to be really clear with the community that board members can't really formally communicate with community members over social media. And so when those conversations are happening on social media, and please, other board members jump in if you disagree with any of this, but when those conversations are happening over social media, we might get a piece of feedback from the community that might, you know, sit with us and, and weigh into our future decision-making, but we can't formally bring that piece of feedback or information back to the board table, nor can we as individual board members represent the board to the community in our communications commenting specifically on social media. So I think it's important that we all understand that and also that the community understands that that's really the board's position. So I guess I'm requesting as it relates to the public relations committee, that maybe we discuss what options we have for a board. Do we want to have a formal approach to social media as a board? Do we prefer to leave it kind of as it's been? I think there are some, some options for us to explore. I don't think we should necessarily get into them here at the board table in specific. I don't think we should necessarily get into them here at the board table in specifics. But I would like to hear recommendations from the Public Relations Committee on how we handle that. But really wanted to bring it up mostly so the public knows that while we can engage as individuals on social media, we cannot engage representing the board in total. And really, if you want to have your feedback heard by the board in total, the best way to do that is by emailing us and emailing us as a total board. So I just wanted to put that out there if anybody else has comments on that. The other thing I wanted to mention is just, there has been some also confusion within the community about text messaging and text messaging board members. And, you know, I think, I'll just say my own, I have some onus here. I know I have checked my text messages during board members, during board meetings. That's not good practice. I think as board members, we all need to be cognizant of that, that that's not good practice. There should not be an expectation in the community that they can text message us during a board meeting and have their issues addressed. And I, I just think it's important that the community understands that that is, it's actually, we could actually be violating the Open Meetings Act by doing that. So we don't want to, we don't want to set that precedent, precedence at the board table, nor do we want to encourage that for the community. We're open to be communicated with in any way, but that is not one of, one of the ways we want to encourage. And also just, if you have an instance, I think this came up specifically because in the last meeting, the, the live stream went down and people had text messaged in expecting that we would check our text messages and be able to respond to that immediately while we'll, while we were in the meeting. And, and we can't do that and I, we just can't do that. And so I want to make sure that's understood by us and by the community and, and that maybe Kevin, we can come up with a plan. And I don't know if this happens with the Public Relations Committee, but if there is a way for, or someone that community members can reach out to, if there is a communications issue during a live meeting, how do they get in touch with somebody to help us be aware of that? You know, somebody who isn't a board member who's trying to focus on the job we need to do at the board table. So those are the couple of things I wanted to bring up. They, they may or may not be able to happen within a Public Relations Committee meeting. But any other comments or questions around that, I would welcome.
I think it's.
Oh, go ahead.
I think it's something good to bring up as a, a goal or even to make a plan as far as social media. Like probably all of us, we try to avoid it, but really like you get so many, you're kind of drawn to it for whatever reason, if it's work, family. So some ways it's like hard to avoid. I can say, I think it may be hard to say we, you know, the board won't use social media because it's also as an avenue. But I think just seeing examples of how it's used with some businesses or some groups. It's sometimes it's just information that comes out and we have to be clear that, you know, it's not, or some emails you get like, do not respond to this, but here is where you can make comments. Like it's one way.
Right.
So, you know, that's something to, you know, I think it's a good discussion for a committee to come up with the ways we're going to use social media or other avenues.
So this has come up in, in past board self evaluations is one place I know we've talked about the use of social media. And if we were at the tri conference this year, there would be multiple sessions that you could go to to discuss use of social media as a board member and, and those sorts of things. And, you know, my takeaway from having attended several of those events is as a board member, you know, your, social media is just a pitfall, really. There's no winning, you know? And it's great, it's a great way to kind of get some information out there, like you're setting a reminder for a board meeting. But then you'll get a question and then you feel, well, I really should respond. And then you respond and then it snowballs and then all of a sudden it turns into something you don't want or it starts reflecting negatively on the district or there's just a whole snowball effect. And then it comes back to either the full board or it comes back to the administration that, well, you know, there's a problem out in the world here and, and we want Kevin to solve that. And I don't like to see that happen because it's very distracting and, and wastes a lot of energy and effort. So, you know, it, it's up to the individual board member how they, they obviously do that. Advice from IASB, flat out when we were in our last board self, or one of our board self evaluations is that, you know, just as a board member, just stay off of it, stay away from it. And I think you could look, I don't know, you could look to other districts and see if, if their board members comment that way. But that, they just felt it was more, brought more problems than positive communications for the board. Along these lines, I will say that I have talked to our, to Dee, our representative at IASB. And I'm looking at getting some dates to have a board self evaluation. It was something the board voted on back in June. And really, you know, until we've got a full board again and everyone's healthy and at the board table, we couldn't have really had a self evaluation anyhow. But possibly looking at a date in January that we could get together. And I think it would be good to have a kind of, again, since we missed the tri conference, a, a board meeting that talks about the roles of the board member and the roles and the relationship of the board member with the community and do's and don'ts and, you know, pearls of wisdom from, from, from the IASB on these topics. And I think it'll help provide some guidance, not only for board members, but for our community. I think it's, you've had a lot of times over my life on, on the board where you just wish the community could understand that this was your role as a board member. So one of the thoughts I had was to have part of that meeting in open session so that we can kind of discuss just in general, what is the real role of a board member? What are your duties and obligations? How do you handle social media? What do you do when somebody comes up to you to the grocery store and, you know, wants you to answer a question for them right away? Those sorts of things. And I'm sure all of us has had that happen at one point or another. Also certainly address texting and communications and open meetings violations and that sort of thing. But just to get everyone hearing from the same source and kind of having an opportunity to discuss the challenges or benefits of, of these communication tools. But I, but I'll let you know, dates and things coming up. And hopefully we'll be able to work that out and it'll be a good, I think it'd be a very positive thing for our community because I think our community often misunderstands what is your role as a board member. They expect you to be able to, they have a problem, they bring it to you. They expect you to be able to fix it for them or you to be able to go to the superintendent and have him fix it on your behalf. And that really isn't, that really isn't our role. It should be much higher level than that and not down in all the nitty gritty details of everything. So I will keep you posted on those updates and we'll try to work out a date where that will, will be beneficial for everybody.
Joel, I want to just comment and say I love the idea of having that, a portion of that meeting be open to the public. I think the more transparent we can be, the better. I also think that, you know, in order for us to really move forward with transparency, you're absolutely right. The community needs, needs to understand our role. They need to, to understand how we are bound in terms of our interactions and what, what is, you know, proper protocol for, for us. And just, just really understand like how best we can communicate with each other. So I appreciate that a lot.
And also equitable communication. I mean, it's one thing, we all have friends in the district, they know our cell phone number, they can text us. But what about all the people out there who don't have that? So we're giving unequal access to our constituency just because they happen to know our cell phone number or, or whatever, or, you know, work on a committee with you in some other community aspect or something. But those are all things you, you know, you need to kind of keep in mind as well so that we are keeping our perspective broad about our whole school community and communicating to the best of our abilities. So more to follow on that.
Can I add something? So agree with everything that's been said. I think one thing that's really difficult with board, with boards in general is that boards, board meetings are really a one-way communication. So we're allowed to have a conversation as a board, but it, even public comments that we get, the structure really isn't meant to be a conversation. So the last, I don't know if it was last year or two years ago that the IAS, the tri conference, I went to a nice seminar, I think with you Laura, that talked about how does a board, how does a board have two-way communication with its community? It's really hard, impossible to do in COVID. But I think that would be some fun things, once we have a good foundation set as, as a board and what our expectations are for each other and, and for the community. I think it'd be fun to explore those things after we get out of the pandemic of how do we make sure that we're not closed off to the community, that we're interacting together and having more of a conversation? Because that largely is not what we do most of the time and it shouldn't be. But there, I think there's some ways we can grow as a board to increase that and as, you know, something to think about in the future.
Certainly. Any other comments, questions, anything about that? Okay. We have a couple of action items to move forward with. The first one is the approval of authorization for treasurer to pay additional November twenty twenty bills. And this basically is because we have one meeting in November. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the treasurer to pay bills received in November twenty twenty for the twenty twenty one fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Conover. Yes, Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Foyle.
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeier.
Yes.
Next action item is approval of the tentative twenty twenty tax levy. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the tentative twenty twenty tax levy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Foyle?
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeier?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
And approval of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar, option B as presented.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Foyle?
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeier?
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Okay, superintendent's report.
Including my report is, we mentioned this earlier in the fall, but just a reminder that on April sixth, there will be an election and local school boards will be on the ballot. We'll have five seats on the ballot. It'll be one, two-year term and for four-year terms. Anyone who is interested in running for the, the CUST two one school board, there's a link provided in board docs and you can also go to the Page County Perspective Candidates page. And just reminder that you must submit your, and file between December fourteenth and December twenty first with the Page County Clerk's Office. And that we'll be here before we know it. And then is the other thing that I want to mention to the board is Kim mentioned with regards to the levy. We have to post that in the newspaper. And one of the things we have to be able to do is location of the levy hearing. And, you know, today, obviously, we're meeting here. The village right now, this building, the lobby is the only portion that's open at this time. The village will still have their meeting here on Thursday. Steve May hasn't made a final decision as to whether or not they'll continue to meet in person. But I guess I'm gauging the board's comfort with still meeting in person. And then if you want to continue meeting here at the Village Hall or if we want to move to south. The other thing too, for the December meeting, we do kind of have to lock in, when do you have to file, Kim?
Well, the third is when it's in the paper and I have to send it a week before that, so next week we need to know.
So I don't know if there's a feeling from the, from the board, if you want to wait to see what the village dictates or if you just want to consider moving it to south.
So I think I would, since you're waiting for a piece of information that you and Kim will get or you'll get maybe later in the week, I would just, I'm fine with just leaving that particular decision up to Kevin as to which meeting location we need to go because he'll have the, without sending a survey around and trying to figure that out or me having to decide. So I would say just go ahead and make the decision when you know the information you need to know.
And then are, is the board still comfortable meeting in, in person?
I am, I don't, I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. Because we, we can make accommodations of individuals or not.
Yeah, if there is a, a time where you feel like you want to, and we have done it in the past, then we can, we can remote individuals in if we need to.
That's my report.
Are there any board reports?
I just have one, just very quickly. We did have our delegate assembly last Saturday, which I attended via Zoom. There was two hundred and eighty-six delegates there voting on the topics. There was no change in, in the policies of the plans to adopt or not adopt. The one school district did have the gun storage thing pulled off and tried to have a discussion on it, but the room did not allow that. So other than that, there was really no new news. So, did I say that was my last delegate meeting? I meant to say my last delegate.
You could say that. Okay, anything else? And public comment? Okay, future meetings, Thanksgiving holiday is the twenty fifth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh. Obviously no school. We have a Manning PTO meeting on December seventh, seven PM. And our next school board meeting is December tenth. And there's one meeting in, oh.
Should be the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, sorry. Next schooler meeting is December.
That was last year.
Yeah.
December fifteenth?
Yep.
Yeah.
We'll know the location later. We will not have to reconvene in closed session. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.